Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council for March 26, 2024. At this time, we'll have a moment of silent prayer. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the wire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. It's so great to see everyone here today. Always nice to see a great crowd come out and join us for the city council meetings. I know this is a special night also. But before we get started into our regular agenda, we're going to get into the Mayor's Minute and Council comments. And I just have a few updates and comments. So first, I know there's been a lot of conversation going on about the State Liners coming back to play at our baseball field. And I'll just say, the city worked with the Virginia High Coaches and also the A.D. and the school system to put together what we felt was a fair contract, always looking out for our Bearcats first. And they decided, Bristol Baseball decided not to come back. They did not, we, the one thing they didn't agree with in our contract was, we just asked them not to make disparaging comments about our field. I think we have an awesome facility and awesome field, and that was the one thing they seemed to get hung up on. So I hate that happened, but it's unfortunately their loss, and we will move on and continue as we have. But I wanted to make sure that we kept our Bearcats first and made sure that they get first priority over that stadium. And I just know from my years of being there as a student and then a coach's wife and then a mom of a player, that I wanted to make sure that, that we had the top with the Bearcats first in mind on that. So just wanted to give you an update on that. And then also keep in mind that this week is Easter, and Friday, the Bristol City offices will be closed for Good Friday. Saturday, there'll be an Easter egg hunt at the Cumberland Park. And then, of course, I hope everyone will go somewhere and enjoy Easter Sunday. And you're all invited to my church if you'd like to come at Highlands Fellowship and here in Bristol, if you'd like to, if you don't have a home church and would like to join us. So I'll open it up now to the other council members for any comments before we get started with the agenda.
I'd like to just add, congratulations to our girls soccer team last night. They, they won their game. And also, the boys' baseball team, they had their first win last night. So, great job, guys and gals. And also, just want to tack on to what the mayor said about Bristol Baseball. We had hoped, both of us and the city staff had worked, worked with Bristol Baseball. They, they brought in some folks from Major League Baseball, too, in the conversation. We had hoped to find, find a way forward, find a way to let them play another, another season at Boy's Cox. But unfortunately, we didn't get there. We had a couple, as, as the mayor said, a couple stipulations that were kind of must-haves. Wanted to make sure that we protected the name of the field, the name of the city, but also, we wanted to look out for our athletes, too. There's been some issues in the past with how the State Liners have treated our, our players and, and their gear and just, that wasn't okay with us. It kind of surprised us when we heard some of the stories. So we wanted to make sure there were some protections in place. And they, they didn't care for that. They wanted to go elsewhere. So we wish them all the best. We wish them a good season. Wish it was here, but it is what it is, so.
You know, I, I would like to thank, thank the mayor and vice mayor for their hard work on, on working with the State Liners. You know, it, it is unfortunate, but we have a lot to look forward to. We have Bearcat baseball, and then we will have the first season of our Bristol Rhythm Soccer Team this year. So, got a lot of good stuff happening down that way. So, so I appreciate everything that you all did, and thank you.
I guess I'm looking forward to everything that will be going on in the city shortly. We're going to have a huge event on June 1st, and I'm sure a lot of people are looking forward to that. We have some new businesses that will be opening up shortly. Some of those are on the Virginia side, a good number of them on the Tennessee side that are all part of our community and we're glad for them. And I'm looking forward to some of the upcoming nice spring weather, where we have a lot of events that are going to take some advantage of that. I know that we are going to have some difficult financial issues that we have to work through as a council, but in the long run, we will make everything work out okay the best we can. We have some really good city staff that will make sure that that happens to the best of their ability. And at least this year, we are not looking to raise into the tax of the case. Also, I'm sure everybody's very glad of that. And we live in the city, so we have to pay it too. And I am also glad for everyone here who's here tonight. Be glad to welcome you out to any council meeting or show or anyone who comes.
All right. Thank you. We will move into city manager comments.
Yes, council, just in addition to what you all had mentioned earlier, city offices will be closed on Friday, March 29th for solid waste collection. Anyone that would be picked up on Friday, March 29th will now be picked up on Monday, April the 1st. And then I'd also like to note that our second comprehensive plan meeting will be on April the 11th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. here in council chambers.
All right. Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
I move for adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by council member Osborne and a second by the vice mayor. Clerk, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave? Yes. And for the record, we will note that Councilman Farnham is calling in by phone, so you hear him, you'll know that he's with us, just not in person. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is a proclamation to honor and recognize the Virginia High School Boys Basketball Team for winning runner-up in the 2024 Class II State Championship. Staff report.
Counsel, before you tonight is a proclamation that recognizes the Virginia High School Boys Basketball Team for their season and their runner-up status in the state of Virginia. Their commitment that was required to reach this goal is something that should be admired and something that all teams and everyone should strive for as they continue through their sports and academic careers. So we want to recognize the Virginia High Boys Basketball Team for all they did this past year on the basketball court.
All right. Great. And I'm going to read the proclamation, and then we'll go through a vote, and then we'll call you up at the end to get a picture. And so, whereas the city of Bristol, Virginia wishes to honor and recognize the Virginia High School Boys Basketball Team comprised of 16 members and coaches for winning runner-up in the Virginia High School League Class II Championship. Whereas, the commitment required for student athletes to be part of a sports team includes meeting required grades, attendance, and volunteer requirements, in addition to attending daily practices and scheduled competition events. And whereas, on March 7th, 2024, the Virginia High School Boys Basketball Team competed in the Class II State Championship at VCU Cigal Center in Richmond, Virginia. And whereas, Virginia High finished the season 23-6 with a notable win over Graham High School to win the Southwest District Championship, the Region II Championship, and advanced to the State Championship Game. And now, therefore, by authority invested in me as the mayor and on behalf of the Bristol City Council and citizens, I applaud the commitment of Virginia High School Boys Basketball Team, 2024 Class II Runner-Up Champions. The council wishes them success in their future, future endeavors. So at this time, I'm looking for a council motion and second.
I move to approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by council member Osborne and a second by the vice mayor. Council discussion.
I'll, I'll jump in here. Great job, guys. It's been a phenomenal season. You, you worked so incredibly hard. I know a couple of us got to go see you guys play in Richmond. It was a great game. We, we hate, the outcome didn't go the way we wanted, but you guys got to Richmond like that, you're champions right there. So we appreciate all the hard work you put into it. We appreciate how you've, or how you've represented the city and all that you've done. You've been great athletes, great students. So we, we're so excited for you guys and so, so proud of you all.
Yeah, great job. Great job to every single one of you. You know, basketball is hard. I can't, I can't even dribble basketball. So your world's ahead of me. So you all did a fantastic job. John Marshall's a very hard team. So you all did a great job. You did a great job against them. You did a great job getting there. And Coach Galishaw, you did a great job. So, you know, we appreciate the way that you represented not only Bristol, but all of Southwest Virginia. You all did fantastic.
All right. And so I'd also like to thank, in addition to that, I know there's other people here and parents here and grandparents here. They're so excited and proud of you all. We are so proud of each and every one of you all and how you also represented our city. And so thank you for all your hard work and everything that you did to make your season successful. I also want to recognize Dr. Scott, our superintendent of schools here, and appreciate him being here tonight. Next, I would like to read off each player's name, and then we will do a picture in the front with your proclamation. So we have, and I'm sorry if I don't get it just right, I'm trying. Deontay Mizell, Keishon Smith, T. Ron Woolen, Jaylen Lang, Ali Carpenter, Landon Lee, Josh Lewis, Cole Filzame? Did I get it? Okay. Kayden Laws, Davy Woolen, Jacob Rowe, and Ethan Carpenter, head coach Julius Galishaw, and assistant coaches Parker Gimel and Derek Lee, and manager Elijah Edson. So congratulations to you all, and I'll ask you all to come forward. Thank you.
Hey, can y'all just Photoshop me in that picture?
All right. So I got really excited, and we did all that, and I forgot to do a roll call vote, but we already gave it to you anyway, so. So we will do, clerk, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes.
Okay. See, I get excited for them. That's the way it is. It's okay. Okay. Next, a proclamation designated, designating April 7th through 17th, 2024 as National Library Week. Staff report.
Counsel, before you is a proclamation designating April 7th through 17th, 2024 as National Library Week. I don't see Tanya Kestner here, but I see Brenda Dunn, and she would be here to accept the proclamation on behalf of the Bristol Public Library.
All right. Great. Reading of proclamation. You want me to read this?
It's up to you.
All right. Whereas, libraries of all types are at the heart of cities, towns, schools, campuses, and serving their communities. And whereas, National Library Week is national observant, sponsored by the American Library Association and libraries across the country each April. It is time to celebrate the contributions of our nation's libraries and library staff and promote library use and support. And whereas, libraries support democracy and effect social change through a commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, I'll get it out, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, and socioeconomic status. And whereas, libraries look beyond their traditional roles and provide transformative opportunities for education, employment, entrepreneurship, empowerment, and engagement, as well as new services that connect closely with patrons' needs. And whereas, libraries transform lives through innovative educational resources and forward-thinking programming. And whereas, libraries are ever-evolving to best serve our communities and fulfill their role in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies. And whereas, libraries lead in working with diverse communities, including people of color, immigrants, and people with disabilities, offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote equity, diversity, and inclusion. Whereas, libraries, librarians, library workers, library board members, and volunteers and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Becky Knave, proclaim National Library Week, April 7th through the 13th, 2024. I encourage all residents to visit the library, explore what is new at your library, and engage your librarian. Because of you and our library leaders, libraries transform. Adopted this 26th day of March, 2024. All right. So I'm looking for a council motion and second.
Move to approve. Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve by council member Pollard and a second by the vice mayor. Council discussion.
Our local library has done a lot on limited resources. Like everyone else in the city, we're going through some financial straits. They've actually gone a long time without the same regular increases that a lot of other city functions have. And they've basically stretched their resources and done a lot with it. There's a lot going on at the library.
Yeah, we have an awesome library. It, it's really wonderful to have a library like we do right here in our city. And if you don't realize all the things and services that they have to offer there, it's amazing. It's more than just going in, checking out a book. You can do all kinds of things through our library. So if you haven't been recently, go over and check it out and spend some time there.
I would just add, too, our, our library is such a great asset to our community. As it talks about bringing people together, it's literally both cities coming together in one library, and it's such a great resource. There's programs for every age group, every, every type of group, just everybody that can come together and learn something new, spend time together. There's meeting space, check out a book, learn something new. It's just a phenomenal resource, and we greatly appreciate what they do in our community.
Yeah, I'll just add, you know, thank you, Ms. Dunn, for being here, and, and please express to Tanya that, that we appreciate everything she does also. And, you know, as, as the other members have said, you know, not only is it checking out a book, you have, I mean, they have the check out anything program or whatever. You can check out a leaf blower for all I know, from the library. So I mean, the library does so much more than books. Books are a major portion of it. Books are the best, best weapon in the world against, against ignorance and misinformation. So we appreciate everything that the library does, and we appreciate the space and how wonderful it looks.
All right. Clerk, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes.
All right. All right. Next on the agenda, supplemental appropriation of $636,884. Staff report, I believe it's Ms. Bradlin.
Thank you, mayor and members of council. This agenda item is a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $636,884. To appropriate additional funds for ongoing outside attorney fees in the amount of $325,000. To appropriate police department grant funds that are available to be expended in this fiscal year, $1,592. To appropriate insurance proceeds received to pay for repairs to the 2020 Pierce Pumper fire truck, $11,638. To appropriate remaining fire department grant funds, once again, to be expended in this fiscal year, $40,000. To appropriate reimbursed funds to pay for overtime worked in the sheriff's department, $1,762. To appropriate additional funds to pay for fiscal year 24 expenditures for the Southwest Virginia Regional Jail Authority, $213,892. And to appropriate treasurer litigation fees to purchase a dedicated vehicle for the treasurer's office through fleet maintenance, $43,000. And staff recommends that council approve the supplemental appropriation as listed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'm looking for a motion and a second.
I move the supplemental appropriation, excuse me.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by the vice mayor and a second by council member Osborne. Council discussion. All right. Clerk, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes.
Can someone go check on Anthony?
All right. Next, matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. And I believe we have several signed up, and I will call you by name. If you'll please come up to the podium and state your name and address, and you have three minutes, and you'll get a warning light and then a red light. That means your time is up. So first, we have Sandy Herman.
My name is Sandy Herman. My address is 22699 Osprey Ridge Road, Bristol, Virginia. We do not live in the city of Bristol, but we do work and shop and worship in Bristol, Virginia. We just honor 13 men that I counted, who were excellent basketball players and will go on to who knows what in, in their lives. And all of their parents, they were pro-life parents, just like all of our parents, some of whom of us was hired to, to Roe v. Wade, but nonetheless, it just shows that life is valuable. Not three miles from here, women are coming to the end of their preborn children. They are coming to end the, the life of their preborn children, some of whom could have been scientists, doctors, teachers, police officers, Marines, and yes, basketball players. We continue to pray that the Bristol, Virginia will become pro-life, and we would ask that the council members consider that. I know you guys are stressed for money, and frankly, abortion is a business, and it brings in money, but it's more than that. It is the life of children, millions and millions of children. And it's just heartbreaking to see their lives being taken on a daily basis. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have Angie Bush.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Anthony. From afar. I have, can, can I give you all each one of these? May I come up and give them?
Yes. You can hand them to, to Neil. Yep.
Anthony, these are the, the little feet pens. I have one there for you, too.
Thank you. All those little feet represent, they are the exact size and shape of a child in the womb at 10 weeks, 10 weeks of life. And so thank you for taking them and looking from you, from me to you. My name's Angie, Angie Bush. I live at 19310 Stone Mountain Road in Abingdon, Virginia. I'm temporarily, temporarily living here in Bristol at 1330 Windsor on the Tennessee side. I work and worship at Saint Anne Catholic Church here in the city of Bristol. While I'm temporarily living here, I'm shopping at the grocery stores on the Virginia side and getting my glass on the Virginia side of Bristol. So I'm, I'm definitely invested in you all, in this city. So yesterday, yes, yesterday, the USA Today published an article about Bristol, and the title was, "Welcome to Bristol, Where America's Abortion Debate Is Right on Your Doorstep." And, and I noticed, Mr. Holmes, you said, you know, with the whole baseball field thing, you know, you wanted to protect the name of the city. Well, the city of Bristol is associated with abortion. And so one thing that stuck out in that article to me was that Bristol Women's Health, the abortion business that is here, Bristol Women's Health, quote, sees up to 150 patients a month. And so when they're seeing patients, they are completely, they boast on their, their website that they are an abortion business. So the women aren't going there for any other services other than abortion. And they, they say on their website that they do abortions up to 16 weeks of life. So that's far, seven weeks past the development of these little feet in the womb. So I did some math yesterday, and I took that 150, so 150 women who are coming each month, and I multiplied it by 18, and that was 2,700 women. So women who, as Terry Brewer said here 18 months ago, and that's where I got the 18. So 18, 18 months ago, we came to you and we asked for a safe zone. And at that point, Terry, Terry Brewer mentioned, you know, that lives would be changed forever. So that's 2,700 women lives are changed forever. And then we also have the 2,700 children whose lives are gone, dead, no heartbeat, they're gone. And those lives are changed forever. So over 18 months ago, 200 people stood here, and, and back in October 22nd, and they wanted you to take on the 22nd, and they wanted you to take on the safe zone. You voted, and it says in the article, "City council passed the zoning measure, but it's been stuck in legal and procedural limbo ever since." I want it out of legal and procedural limbo. 200 of us who spoke back in October want it out of limbo. So, the people who have emailed you and written you letters, they want it out of limbo. And some of you haven't, they haven't heard a response from you. I don't know if my time's...
Yes, if you have lasting, ending comments, we'll allow you to do that.
So, while the favor of a response for the people who have emailed and written you all letters, please respond, but also please take up this issue again. It's worth it. It's life. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next on the list is Samuel Meredith.
My name is Samuel Meredith, and I live at 216 Robin Road in Bristol, Tennessee. And I really appreciate the recognition that you all did of the library today. I've spent many, many hours, countless hours, at the library, and it really is a wonderful place. I recommend it highly. You know, I'd say it's the best library definitely in the nation and maybe in the world. Bristol is my home, and I've been to many city council meetings before, speaking about the homeless crisis and the absurd tax increases. And I have witnessed you, the city council, in a total disregard for the citizens of your community, shift the time for public comment to the end of the meeting, burdening the community members by requiring us to sit through arduous discussions simply to have a voice. Additionally, you have put limits on the number of people that speak. This is especially personal to me because I had come before this to five different city council meetings that lasted over three hours, when I had signed up to speak, and I was denied that ability because we ran out of time. While many people may not stand behind me, currently there are thousands of people that stand with me supporting the zoning bill that, as has been said, is sitting in legal, I don't know, it's not being brought up, it's not being talked about. I am deeply frustrated. I have avoided many city council meetings for a while because of the disregard that you showed to your citizens. I felt that it was pointless to say anything to a group of people who can do such disrespectful things to the people that they claim to serve. Because the abortion issue is so close to my heart, I have not given up. I pondered for a long time what to say to you city council members, and I do not wish my speaking time to be an aggressive attack, but instead a passionate plea, one that comes with deep regret for the lack of care that it feels you city council members have shown to the citizens of Bristol. I come here because I hope that you council members do care for this community, and that you may consider listening to our voice and ponder how you can better serve the citizens of our community.
All right, thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by council member Osborne and a second by the vice mayor. Clerk, please call the roll. Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Knave.
Yes. All right, with that being the last item, we now stand adjourned.